And I want to welcome you to our regular meeting of the Burke County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, December the 16th, 2014. At this time, I would like to recognize a couple of special guests. Bill Satterwhite from Redford College Town Council, we welcome you here. Eugenie Fine from the Board of Elections Director, we welcome you here too. Gentlemen, do either of y'all have a special guest here this evening? Family members?
Oh yeah, I've got an excellent daughter-in-law, Debbie Taylor. She is a teacher of these children, I believe, who's going to do your pledge of allegiance.
All right, anyone else? All right, if not, again, I welcome you here at this time. If you would silence all your mobile devices for me, please, so that they won't go off during the meeting. If you're called to the front to use the microphones, if you would, lean forward and use those microphones real close. Madam Clerk, all the Commissioners here, along with the County Attorney and the County Manager, Deputy County Manager. Our invocation tonight is going to be done by Pastor Mike Chandler from Summit Community Church. And right after Pastor comes up and does our invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance from the Ray Childers Student Government Association, where Karen Alton is the Principal. So our order will be the invocation first. Mike, if you'll come to the podium, and right after that, the children will do our Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Thank you. Let us pray. I hope, Father, we're very grateful to you for your blessings to each and every one of us. And, Father, the fact that we're here tonight, that we're alive, is a blessing. And, Father, I pray that for this evening, I pray for all the decisions that will be made, all the things that will be going over. Father, may we have your mind and your heart. And, Father, I pray that your will be done tonight in all things. May you be honored and glorified through what is spoken and what is thought in everything we pray, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Great. If y'all will remain right there, we want to come down and take a picture with you, and then you'll see your picture over here on the wall one day if you want to come in and see it. So wait for us till we get there. Parents, y'all come on up and get your cameras ready.
(inaudible)
Great.
I'm getting my teacher in. Come on over. Get everybody in front.
Yes.
How are we doing today?
Uh, we're good.
Okay. Press smile. One more smile.
(inaudible). Parents, y'all good? Keep taking, we'll stand by here for a minute. (laughing) Gentlemen, give these children a big round of applause. Well, the big crowd left, didn't they? Lost one whole side. All right, gentlemen, we'll move on to item number four, is approval of the meeting minutes. In front of you, you have the November 4th, 2014, pre-agenda meeting minutes, the November 18th, 2014, regular meeting minutes, and the December 1st, 2014, Board of Commissioners' organizational meeting, which was provided to you last week. I think you've all had time to take a look at those. If you're satisfied with those, if there are no changes, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no changes or deletions, I make a motion to approve the three groups of minutes as printed.
All right, you've heard the motion from Wayne. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Except Jeff, you can raise your left hand.[216.12][216.12](laughing) Jeff said he tried to pick up his wife with one hand, and it did not work. And he is bummed up and in a sling right now. I don't believe that story, but that's what he said. We'll move on to item number five, the approval of... That was five oh, Madam Clerk. Move on to the approval of the agenda. You had the supplemental information provided for decision item number two. We'll entertain a motion for the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you've heard the motion from Maynard. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Be five oh, Madam Clerk. Our presentation tonight, our first presentation, will be recognition of Libby Cooper, Register of Deeds, and we're going to recognize Libby and her family. Gentlemen, I want to request something special, if it's okay with you. I want all of you to join me down front, if you don't mind. Libby? You'll just come forward with us right here for the moment, and stand over here. We just do it in the front, in front of these others. (inaudible) lastly, we want to present you from the Burke County Board of Commissioners, we will express our sincere appreciation to you in recognition of 37 years of dedicated service as an employee of Burke County, and 19 years of faithful service as the Burke County Register of Deeds. (applause)
Thank y'all so much. It's been a pleasure, even though someone was like, "All right."
Who was that?
Uh, crossing like... But I've enjoyed every day. And I'm pleased, even now. And I hope to come back again, and great cheer, and help me bring my...
I can't believe, after 12 years, we get it on our shelves. Now just retire it, but it's a deal, Paul. So we get in the shell, and you can't please the woman, right?
Me, so Carol Hollywood.
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
But the only thing is, we've got a lot of love, and I'm really cheering on you to get together, wish you all the best, and wherever you live.
I'm just congratulating Ms. Cooper on the great service.
I just hope you have a good hobby, and you work into this retirement real soon, because you're going to have some time on your hands.
Well, I'd just like to say, it's been a nice journey, a nice walk, and I too wish you the best of health, and that your vacation or retirement is really what you expect of it. If you catch more fish than you want to eat, you can share it with us.
(laughing)
Yeah. But we do wish you the best for you and your children. Thank you.
I just want to say, over at the community center, you should be proud.
(laughing)
Thank you for your service. Thank you for everything you've done, and I hope you have a great time.
(inaudible).
It's kind of beautiful to see from me, because you've played this game together. (inaudible) first time she did it in basketball, football, and direction community center, and her husband, Poit, gave me my first job. (inaudible). Long time ago. Yeah, yeah. We had some great... Great season for all of us here at Christmas, and we love you, and we...
Moving on to item number seven, is our scheduled public hearings from BDI Economic Development Grant Agreement for CE Foam Solutions LLC, and that will be presented by Brian Steen. Right?
Let me just put that up here. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you're aware, CE Foam Solutions LLC is located in a 65,000 square foot building in Valdez, and intends to hire 20 full-time associates over the next three years. The end product is a foam material used in the upholstery business of residential and commercial furnishings. The company has received a $20,000 ONE NC grant from the state of North Carolina, which requires a dollar-for-dollar match. The town of Valdez approved all documents related to the economic development grant with CE Foam Solutions LLC, and approved the $10,000 of the ONE NC match at their November 3rd, 2014 meeting. So we will need to do likewise, and hold a public hearing, and then, from the conclusion of that hearing, make a motion regarding this request.
Thank you, Brian. Madam Clerk, I'm now going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to the CE Foam Solutions LLC grant agreement? Anyone? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, anybody have any questions for Brian on this matter? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, the motion is a little lengthy, but it's to approve an economic development incentive grant for CE Foam Solutions LLC, including the adoption of resolution to approve the grant agreement, and authorize the chairman to execute on behalf of the board, subject to review and/or revision by the county attorney, to appropriate $10,000 of general fund balance in FY 1450, if needed. Further, authorize the chairman to execute any further documentation related to this grant, if needed.
All right, you've heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to nothing. Thank you so very much. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up for public comments?
Yes, sir, we have one gentleman, Mr. Jeff Johns.
Mr. Johns, come forward, please.
Hello, gentlemen. I appreciate you giving me...
Mr. Johns, would you... I want you to go to that microphone right there, if you would, so she can hear you all.
I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak on my behalf, in regards to the matter of the proposed Lindell Access Road going into access to the boat launch and county park, that is somewhere in the future. As I learned from Scott Carpenter over the past year, Crescent Resources has needed 140 acres to use immediately adjacent to my property, with what is the old historic Wilkes-Barre Road leading into it. This road... I bought my property 30 years ago, when Crescent Resources was clear-cutting the timber up in that area. They had already taken all the wood off the property, which is now Duke, or Burke County's land, but they had not timbered the land behind me, which is still in Crescent. So I know what it's like to... The unsettling and the disruption this kind of traffic can cause, when it's this close to a home. Of course, I bought that land with the intention of being out in the country where it's quiet. The difference between what is about to happen, what is being proposed to happen, and the Crescent timbering operation, is that I knew at some point it would stop. If this proposal goes through, I'm going to be looking at constant disruption from traffic, noise, dust, and I'm asking your consideration to consider relocating this. I have spoken with Scott and Joe Character, the fellow with Duke Energy, about this, and obviously, yeah, they want to bring it in the cheapest way they can, I understand that, but for a little extra money, I think we could reroute this around me. I kind of brought some little pencil sketches with me, from the Google Earth topographical map, and, you know, the total road's going to be about 4,000 feet. To reroute it, it might take a quarter of that, maybe 1,000 feet at the most. My other question, of course, is the timeliness of this. Duke Power is committed to building this road, according to Joe, and... But they're not going to build the boat launch for eight to 10 more years. I mean, I'm a boat owner, I go down and use the Lindell Access as it is now, and on the 4th of July, which is the busiest day of the year, I still find spaces down there to park right in the middle of the day, this year, last year. So my question is, according to Scott Carpenter, there's no funding for the county park yet, and I'm wondering why we need to rush into building this road, particularly where he wants to put it, if there's... If it's going to lead to nothing for a while. I mean, so, as I said, I ask your consideration to try to find a solution to reroute it around me, or to mitigate, you know, the damage it will cause me. I mean, I can't help but to believe it will reduce the value of my property. I have rental property on the premises that I rent to people who share the same like of solitude that I do, and I think it could affect my business, and honestly, I quite enjoy it in my property. So I appreciate your consideration of this. And if you could come out and see, I'd love to show you how close this is. I mean, the trail is basically... My property line goes down the middle of the old Wilkes-Barre Road. It's 30 feet from my bedroom window. Now, Joe told me, they're going to try to bring it up to DOT standards, so they're going to need 30 feet on each side, you know? Let's say it's another 30 feet. Still, it's going to be quite close. I can hear the church bells, you know, from the church a mile and a half down. I can hear people talking down at the current Lindell Access area, on a calm night in the summertime. So I can only imagine what traffic... I mean, I don't know how long it'll take to construct the road, year, two years?
Mr. Johns, let me interrupt just a moment. Gentlemen, without objection, I'm going to give him a minute or two to finish up.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry I went over my time. Anyway, I just want...
It's okay, just finish.
I would love to have any of y'all out, if you would consider coming, to let me show you, you know, how this will impact me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. John.
Happy holidays.
Happy... Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to item number nine, is our consent agenda. At this time, I'll recognize County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have 16 items on your consent agenda. A BOC Adoption of Rules of Procedure for 2015. BRCA Community Service Block Grant for physical year 2015-16. From the Clerk, Resolution to Establishing BOC 2015 Meeting Schedule. Clerk, Board of Commissioners, 2015 Commissioners Appointments. Number five, Clerk, Board of Health Appointment and Reappointment. Number six, Clerk, Removal and Appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Number seven, Clerk, Appointment of Member to the Burke County Planning Board. Number eight, Clerk, Appointments to Tourism Development Authority. Number nine, Clerk, 2014 Annual Report for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Item 10, Finance Agreed Upon Procedures Engagement. Number 11, HR Amendment to Section 5.04 Expectations of Ethical Conduct. Number 12, Register of Deeds Approval of Records Retention Schedule Amendment. Number 13, Tax EMS Collections Report for October 2014. Number 14, Tax Tax Collections Report for November 2014. Number 15, Tax Release Refund Report for November 2014. And number 16, Western Piedmont Council of Government Request to Release a Deed of Trust for Bradley Ledford. That concludes your items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Brian. Gentlemen, you've heard the 16 items on the consent agenda. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve all 16.
All right, you've heard the motion by Maynard. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to nothing. Or five to zero. Moving on to item number 10, items for discussion. Our first item is from the County Manager on the section of Construction Manager at Risk. Right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we sent out a request for qualifications related to obtaining a construction manager at risk for the construction of a new jail. We had five companies provide submittals. The companies were Turner Construction, WM Jordan Company, Vanoy Construction, MB Khan Construction, and Hickory Construction Company. Board members received copies of all submittals on October 21st, 2014. That time, I asked that the Chairman and Commissioner Britt assist myself and the finance officer in reviewing these and scoring them, and later on, Commissioner Taylor also wanted to participate. County Finance Officer took the results of our scoring, and the results are, Vanoy Construction Company was the first best-ranked out of the five. So I don't know if you want to have any further discussion about that, but again, Vanoy Construction was the top company when the finance officer took all the scores from all the raters and put them into a calculation to decide which company was the best qualified according to our schedule and our evaluations.
All right, do you want to have any questions for Brian at this time? All right, if there's no questions, what is the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Chairman, I move to authorize County Manager to negotiate and execute contract with the recommended firm for construction manager at risk services for NCGS 14364.31, in relation to the construction of a new county jail.
All right, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands.
All opposed.
Be four to one, Madam Clerk. We've gone to our next decision item, and General Services will be the renewal of lease for NC 18 South Convenience Site, presented by Brock Hall, our interim director. Brock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've discussed in our previous meetings, the container site on 18th South, lease agreement will run out on December 31st of this year. The property owner has extended to us a couple of options in order to continue to occupy the site. The first option was the renewal of the lease agreement for an increase in rent of $125 a month, increasing the annual rent from $4,500 a year to $6,000 a year. The other option that she presented to us was the option to purchase the property for the amount of $32,000, and that was the last information that I received since the re-agenda.
All right, you've heard all the information from Brock. Anybody have any questions for Brock or the County Manager on this item?
Well, go ahead, Maynard. Mr. Chairman, I thought we were going to entertain a purchase of the property. Did we decide not to do that?
No, sir, you have the option tonight to move for a lease agreement and/or for a direct purchase. It would be either one of those two motions.
She changed the lease agreement from six years down to three?
It's always been three, to my knowledge.
Three?
And we negotiated down to two, I think, but that was...
That's right, because the six was the amount of money that we were going to, $6,000 a year.
Right.
Yeah. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think the only option here, and again, I think they did some negotiating, but again, I would think that it would be a benefit for the county to buy not only this spot, but our other spots where we have... And, I mean, this is ridiculous, going to 1,500 on this site. In five and a half years, we'll have it paid for, against the price of rent, and it should probably go up again sometimes, so I don't think there's any other thing but a recommendation to... And I'll be happy to put that in the motion to authorize the staff to go ahead and do that with the... And I'd still like to see some negotiation there. I'm sure you, you know, maybe wave the money in her face a little bit, or whatever, but, you know, $32,000 isn't bad, but again, $3,000 would be better.
Let me see if there's any other comments. Jack or Jeff? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I just...
Yes, sir. Sure.
I put it in a form of an email, but I would like to just say it to the public. I think this is by far, I did what Wayne said, and I think this is by far the best deal for the taxpayer.
Absolutely. How many years have we leased from her, Brock?
Oh, gosh. I'm not sure. Been a while.
Has it been 10?
I believe, at least.
At 10, and how much would it have been the average for those, each year, for those 10 years?
Oh, you'd remember anything like that.
Yeah. So if we'd purchased a long time ago, we'd already had it paid for.
Yep.
More than likely. Okay, I'll entertain the motion.
And again, you have my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion is to authorize staff to initiate a direct purchase of the real property for $32,000, appropriate general fund, fund balance, and authorize County Manager to execute the related documentation. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to zero. Thank you, Brock.
Thank you.
And I think Wayne also signified, Brian, that he'd like for us to pursue, see if we could purchase the rest of those.
Yeah, I've already asked Brock to start looking into that.
All right. Well, that concludes our items for decision, and moves us to number 11, our reports and comments. So let's start over on the right-hand side, to West Fire Barister.
No comments tonight, except to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Same thing, but I have a few things I'd like to show you.
Certainly.
This past Friday night, I was honored with the opportunity to be the speaker for the Western Piedmont Community College Basic Law Enforcement Training Class of 2014-02. That's EMS. Can you back up to the other picture? Back the other way. Steve, do you have that picture of the plaque? Never mind, let me just go on then.
I'll take your word for it, Brian.
All right, I've got some updated pictures of the EMS station number seven. Can we do that a little slower? They're doing some inside wall work now. That's in the bay area, the bay doors are in. A little bit slower. That's the front of the building. Bay's. Some electrical work, systems. The asphalting has been done. This is a picture of the back of the building. Now, you see that the asphalt has actually been done also for the senior services parking area as well, and the new parking spaces are off to the right, so I didn't get that into the frame, on that particular frame. You can see, I'm worried that I'm going to have to have the law down there to keep the EMS folks. They already had three ambulances there, waiting to get in. They're excited. But you can see where those ambulances are. Those are new parking spaces that the senior services will be able to utilize. And again, this is all one paving operation, so there's not going to be any old asphalt versus new, and any kind of issues with the seams. And the guttering, the concrete guttering, curving has been put in. Anymore? There's the plaque. All right. And... Had some great... Great season for all of us here at Christmas, and we love you and will.
Moving on to item number seven is our scheduled public hearings from BDI Economic Development Grant Agreement for CE Foam Solutions LLC, and that will be presented by Brian Steen. Right?
Let me just put that up here. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you're aware, CE Foam Solutions LLC is located in a 65,000 square foot building in Valdez and intends to hire 20 full-time associates over the next three years. The end product is a foam material used in the upholstery business of residential and commercial furnishings. The company has received a $20,000 ONE NC grant from the state of North Carolina which requires a dollar-for-dollar match. The town of Valdez approved all documents related to the economic development grant with CE Foam Solutions LLC and approved the $10,000 of the ONE NC match at their November 3, 2014 meeting. So we will need to do likewise and hold a public hearing and then from the conclusion of that hearing, make a motion regarding this request.
Thank you, Brian. Madam Clerk, I'm now going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to the CE Foam Solutions LLC grant agreement? Anyone? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, anybody have any questions for Brian on this matter? Hearing none, what is the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, the motion is a little lengthy, but it's to approve an economic development incentive grant for CE Foam Solutions LLC, including the adoption of resolution to approve the grant agreement and authorize the chairman to execute on behalf of the board, subject to review and/or revision by the county attorney, to appropriate $10,000 of general fund balance in FY 1415 if needed. Further authorize the chairman to execute any further documentation related to this grant if needed.
All right, you've heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to nothing. Thank you so very much. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up for public comments?
Yes, sir, we have one gentleman, Mr. Jeff Johns.
Mr. Johns, come forward, please.
I appreciate you giving me...
Ms. Johns, would you, I want you to go to that microphone right there if you would, so she can hear you.
I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak on my behalf in regards to the matter of the proposed Linville Access Road going into access to the boat launch and county park that is somewhere in the future. As I learned from Scott Carpenter over the past year, Crescent Resources has needed 140 acres to you immediately adjacent to my property with what is the old historic Wilkesboro Road leading into it. This road, I bought my property 30 years ago when Crescent Resources was clear-cutting the timber up in that area. They had already taken all the wood off the property, which is now Duke or Burke County's land, but they had not timbered the land behind me, which is still in Crescent. So I know what it's like to, the unsettling and the disruption this kind of traffic can cause when it's this close to a home. Of course, I bought that land with the intention of being out in the country where it's quiet. The difference between what is about to happen, what is being proposed to happen, and the Crescent timbering operation is that I knew at some point it would stop. If this proposal goes through, I'm going to be looking at constant disruption from traffic, noise, dust, and I'm asking your consideration to consider relocating this. I have spoken with Scott and Joe Character, the fellow with Duke Energy, about this, and obviously, yeah, they want to bring it in the cheapest way they can, I understand that, but for a little extra money, I think we could reroute this around me. I kind of brought some little pencil sketches with me from the Google Earth topographical map, and, you know, the total road's gonna be about 4,000 feet. To reroute it, it might take a quarter of that, maybe 1,000 feet at the most. My other question, of course, is the timeliness of this. Duke Power is committed to building this road, according to Joe, and, but they're not gonna build the boat launch for eight to 10 more years. I mean, I'm a boat owner, I go down and use the Linville Access as it is now, and on the 4th of July, which is the busiest day of the year, I still find spaces down there to park right in the middle of the day this year, last year. So my question is, according to Scott Carpenter, there's no funding for the county park yet, and I'm wondering why we need to rush into building this road, particularly where he wants to put it, if there's, if it's gonna lead to nothing for a while. I mean, so, as I said, I asked your consideration to try to find a solution to reroute it around me or to mitigate, you know, the damage it will cause me. I mean, I can't help but to believe it will reduce the value of my property. I have rental property on the premises that I rent to people who share the same like of solitude that I do, and I think it could affect my business and honestly, I quite enjoy it in my property. So I appreciate your consideration of this. If you could come out and see, I'd love to show you how close this is. I mean, the trail is basically, my property line goes down the middle of the old Wilkesboro Road. It's 30 feet from my bedroom window. Now, Joe told me there's gonna, they're gonna try to bring it up to DOT standards, so they're gonna need 30 feet on each side, you know. Let's say it's another 30 feet. Still, it's gonna be quite close. I can hear the church bells, you know, from the church a mile and a half down. I can hear people talking down at the current Linville Access area on a calm night in the summertime. So I can only imagine what traffic, I mean, I don't know how long it'll take to construct the road, year, two years?
Ms. Johns, let me interrupt just a moment. Gentleman, without objection, I'm gonna give him a minute or two to finish up.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry I went over my time. Anyway, I just want...
It's okay, just finish.
I would love to have any of y'all out, if you would consider coming, to let me show you, you know, how this will impact me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Happy holidays.
Happy, thank you, sir. All right, moving on to item number nine is our consent agenda. At this time, I'll recognize county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have 16 items on your consent agenda. BOC Adoption of Rules of Procedure for 2015. BRCA Community Service Block Grant for Physical Year 2015-16. From the clerk, Resolution Establishing BOC 2015 Meeting Schedule. Clerk, Board of Commissioners, 2015 Commissioners Appointments. Number five, Clerk, Board of Health Appointment and Reappointment. Number six, Clerk, Removal and Appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Number seven, Clerk, Appointment of Member to the Burke County Planning Board. Number eight, Clerk, Appointments to Tourism Development Authority. Number nine, Clerk, 2014 Annual Report for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Item 10, Finance Agreed Upon Procedures Engagement. Number 11, HR Amendment to Section 5.04 Expectations of Ethical Conduct. Number 12, Register of Deeds Approval of Records Retention Schedule Amendment. Number 13, Tax EMS Collections Report for October 2014. Number 14, Tax Tax Collections Report for November 2014. Number 15, Tax Release Refund Report for November 2014. And number 16, Western Piedmont Council of Government Request to Release a Deed of Trust for Bradley Ledford. That concludes your items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Brian. Gentleman, you've heard the 16 items on the consent agenda. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve all 16.
All right, you've heard the motion by Mayor. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to nothing, or five to zero. Moving on, item number 10, items for discussion. Our first item is from the county manager on the section of Construction Manager at Risk. Right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we sent out a request for qualifications related to obtaining a construction manager at risk for the construction of a new jail. We had five companies provide submittals. The companies were Turner Construction, WM Jordan Company, Vanoy Construction, MB Khan Construction, and Hickory Construction Company. Board members received copies of all submittals on October 21, 2014. That time, I asked that the chairman and Commissioner Britt assist myself and the finance officer in reviewing these and scoring them, and later on, Commissioner Taylor also wanted to participate. County finance officer took the results of our scoring, and the results are Vanoy Construction Company was the first best-ranked out of the five. So I don't know if you want to have any further discussion about that, but again, Vanoy Construction was the top company when the finance officer took all the scores from all the raters and put them into a calculation to decide which company was the best qualified according to our schedule and our evaluations.
All right, do you want to have any questions for Brian at this time? All right, if there's no questions, what is the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Chairman, I move to authorize county manager to negotiate and execute contact tract with the recommended firm for construction manager risk services for NCGS 14364.31 in relation to the construction of a new county jail.
All right, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands.
All opposed.
A four to one, Madam Clerk. We've gone to our next decision item, and General Services will be the renewal of lease for NC 18 South Convenience Site, presented by Brock Hall, our interim director. Brock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've discussed in our previous meetings, the container site on 18 South, lease agreement will run out on December 31 of this year. The property owner has extended to us a couple of options in order to continue to occupy the site. The first option was the renewal of the lease agreement for an increase in rent of $125 a month, increasing the annual rent from $4,500 a year to $6,000 a year. The other option that she presented to us was the option to purchase the property for the amount of $32,000, and that was the last information that I received since the re-agenda.
All right, you've heard all the information from Brock. Anybody have any questions for Brock or the county manager on this item?
Go ahead, Mayor. Mr. Chairman, I thought we were, when we entertained a purchase of the property, did we decide not to do that?
No, sir, you have the option tonight to move for a lease agreement and/or for a direct purchase. It would be either one of those two motions.
She changed the lease agreement from six years down to three?
It's always been three, to my knowledge.
Three?
And we negotiated down to two, I think that was...
That's right, because the six was the amount of money that we were going to, $6,000 a year.
Right.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think the only option here, and again, I think they did some negotiating, but again, I would think that it would be a benefit for the county to buy not only this spot, but our other spots where we have, and, I mean, this is ridiculous, going to 1,500 on this site. In five and a half years, we'll have it paid for if, against the price of rent, and it should probably go up again sometimes, so I don't think there's any other thing but a recommendation to, and I'll be happy to put that in the motion to authorize the staff to go ahead and do that with the, and I'd still like to see some negotiation there. I'm sure you, you know, maybe wave the money in her face a little bit or whatever, but, you know, $32,000 isn't bad, but again, $30,000 would be better.
Let me see if there's any other comments. Jack or Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, if I just...
Yes, sir. Sure.
I put it in a form of an email, but I would like to just say it to the public. I think this is by far, I did to what Wayne said, and I think this is by far the best deal for the taxpayer.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to...
How many years have we leased from her, Brock?
Oh, gosh, I'm not sure. Been a while.
Has it been 10?
I believe at least.
At 10, and how much would it have been the average for those, each year for those 10 years?
Oh, you don't remember anything like that?
So if we'd purchased a long time ago, we'd already had it paid for.
Yep.
More than that. Okay, I'll entertain the motion.
And again, you have my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion is to authorize staff to initiate a direct purchase of the real property for $32,000, appropriate general fund, fund balance, and authorize county manager to execute the related documentation. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to zero. Thank you, Brock.
Thank you.
And I think Wayne also signified Brian that he'd like for us to pursue, see if we could purchase the rest of those.
Yeah, I've already asked Brock to start looking into that.
All right. Well, that concludes our items for decision and moves us to number 11, our reports and comments. So let's start over on the right-hand side. What's our barrister?
No comments tonight, except to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Same thing, but I have a few things I'd like to show you.
Certainly.
This past Friday night, I was honored with the opportunity to be the speaker for the Western Piedmont Community College Basic Law Enforcement Training Class of 2014-02. That's EMS. Can you back up to the other picture? Back the other way. Steve, do you have that picture of the plaque? Never mind, let me just go on then.
I'll take your word for it, Brian.
All right, got some updated pictures of the EMS station number seven. Can we do that a little slower? They're doing some inside wall work now. That's in the bay area, the bay doors are in. A little bit slower. That's the front of the building. Some electrical work systems. The asphalting has been done. This is a picture of the back of the building. You see that the asphalt has actually been done also for the senior services parking area as well, and the new parking spaces are off to the right, so I didn't get that into the frame on that particular frame. You can see, I'm worried that I'm gonna have to have the law down there to keep the EMS folks. They already had three ambulances there waiting to get in. They're excited. But you can see where those ambulances are, that, those are new parking spaces that the senior services will be able to utilize. And again, this is all one paving operation, so there's not going to be any old asphalt versus new and any kind of issues with the seams. And the guttering, the concrete guttering curbing has been put in. Anymore? There's the plaque. All right. And then, a couple Saturdays ago, I got to go down to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. That was the first time I've been back on an active air force base in about 32 years. That's the KC-135 air refueling plane. They were built starting in the mid-1950s up to 1964, and I was on one of the newer ones that was built in 1961. I think we've got a picture of their squadron mascot, if you can see that with the flame coming out of the gas nozzle. There's some other different pictures inside the cockpit before we took off. There, we're airborne, and there was a couple of tankers off to our right side as we were flying out to the practice area. And I think we've got some live video. There's no sound of that? No sound? All right, well, we tried to get a little bit of an actual video of it while I was in the airplane, and I believe that concludes it. But again, thank you. We support our guard and reserves and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Right, Wayne?
Again, I wish all our citizens a very happy and prosperous Christmas season and a New Year, and I hope our economy looks like things are turning a little bit, and I hope, again, that we, our folks can, there'll be jobs for them this year and just a very prosperous New Year, I hope. Thank you.
Santa Claus, Mr. Chairman? For you folks who can't see, Santa Claus has been here a couple of times already, and he came by and left a gift for each one of these fine gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
And we couldn't, the years that we have this past year, it's been a great year.
Thank you.
We have...
Thank you, sir.
...accomplished much, and I thank the Burke County as we've received a lot of the advantage, a lot of hard work, a lot of planning, a lot of effort on behalf of the staff and your county commissioners, and this is just a token of appreciation, and you will take one to change.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
But anyhow, I think Santa Claus is gonna be good to us. Folks, we haven't talked about it much, but we moved up to tier two, and I don't know how many years, do you know, I don't know how many years we've been, which is a big benefit for Burke County. So we want to say to you and to yours, we hope you have a happy, safe, and healthy holiday, and you get to see all your friends, and hope Santa Claus is really good to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Jeff?
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. I, like the others, would just simply echo a Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year.
Well, thank you.
Time, save time. I'd echo what Mayor said, and so I will take up more time. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a great New Year. Hope we'll be better off next year than we are now. Keep moving forward.
Madam Clerk?
Just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Enjoyed the year.
Thank you, gentlemen and citizens of Burke County. The only thing I'd like to say is that we are truly blessed. God has blessed us richly. We live in one of the greatest places. We live in the greatest nation on earth, and I would say that living in Burke County for us, we've all been here most of our lives, and this is a great place to live, work, and play. I'm truly blessed, and my family's blessed. I'm blessed to work with you gentlemen on this board. This, in my opinion, has been one of the better boards that has stayed together for a long, long time, and I do appreciate that. We certainly all don't agree on everything that comes in front of us, but we do the work of the public, and I do appreciate that very much. To you citizens out there, I hope God richly blesses you during this season, and I hope we always remember what this season is about. Vacancy announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have the following vacancies on county boards and committees. The Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Belkare Community Home Advisory Committee, the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, the Council on Aging, City of Morganton for the ETJ, Board of Adjustment, the Board of Equalization and Review, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Library Board of Trustees, Burke County Parks and Recreation, and the Voluntary Agriculture Board. We're also soliciting applications for the state vacancies, North Carolina Museum of Art Cemetery Commission, Environmental Management Commission, and the North Carolina Finance Agriculture Authority.
Thank you, Kay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll again remind all you folks that are watching us on TV, please take advantage of these boards that are open. We do need volunteers. Just get in contact with Kay or go to our website and see what's available. We do have a need to go into closed session to discuss threat and or pending litigation and to preserve the attorney-client privilege to discuss economic development matters and to discuss personnel matters authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-3, 18.11, paragraph 8, 3, 4, and 6. So I need a motion.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Wayne. All in favor? That's five to zero. Let's take about a five-minute break before we go into session. A vote was taken during closed session concerning a matter under litigation that will be sealed until all parties have agreed to the terms and conditions of this litigation, and we will stand in recess until January the 6th.
After frigid.
After frigid. All right. Thank you.